Steve, can you hear us?
Apparently not.
I can hear you, Kyle.
Okay, thanks, Annette. We're trying to get Steve's audio to work.
The AC is not working good.
At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening because we are meeting due to the pandemic still by Zoom with a portion of the council members. We will take a roll. So I'll call on city clerk Kyle Box to take the roll.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister. Steve Meister.
I believe council member Meister is having audio issues right now, but he's attempting to connect.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now we can hear you.
Okay.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
So the council is all present. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll move to agenda number two, which would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting. Both were held on September 8, 2020. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
I move reapproval.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes, on the special abstain on the regular because I wasn't in attendance.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. The minutes are approved. We'll move then to the consent agenda, the items on the consent agenda that we have this evening. Consider the approval of amendment to the personnel manual appendix B, the maximum allowable reimbursable per diem rates. Consider authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider approval of a farm lease between Morchier Farms, Inc. and the City of Marshall. Consider the approval of a farm lease between Ron Burley and the City of Marshall. Consider the resolution accepting Jonathan Montarolso as a member of PERA Public Employees Police and Fire Plan. Consider the approval of temporary on sale liquor license where the Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce. Consider the application for an exempt permit for shades of the past and to consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number three, please, Mr. Mayor.
Any other item? Not as our motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda discussion. There's no discussion. Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion does pass. Agenda number three, consider the approval of amendment to the personnel policy manual appendix B, the maximum allowable reimbursable per diem rate. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reading through the document, I only have a question on section 11.11, transportation method and mileage expense. The way it states in the proposal, the amendment, personnel policy is the traveler should choose a method of transportation at the lowest total cost. For non-local travel, the traveler is encouraged to use a rental car where there is a cost benefit to the city. I'm not sure if there's a cost benefit, but I know our equipment review committee, and I know we as council spend a considerable amount of time talking about city vehicles, and we're trying to keep them in good shape and everything else. I'm just wondering if the first thing that they should be considering is the use of a city vehicle, and if one is not available, then go to the rental. I mean, again, we've got, I think we purchased three or four new pickups in the recent, you know, in the recent 12 months, maybe 18 months. And again, if somebody needs to use a pickup to go to a meeting in Wilmer or Minneapolis or something, I think one of those vehicles should make it there with relatively ease, so we could probably save the expense of not renting a vehicle. So I just would like to see that added on 11.11 if possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sheila, would you clarify? Because my understanding was that if, in some cases, especially where out of town travel, for example, a trip to the cities and return the same day, there are times when it is actually more cost effective for a rental vehicle.
That is true. Yes. The employee does look at both methods of travel and determines which one is the best. There are occasions where there may not be a city vehicle available to that employee, and therefore they would also look at whether a rental vehicle or a reimbursement would be cheaper. So the employee is actually required to look at all available means and choose the method that best suits the city. And the manager would be making that decision.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with Sheila said, but I'm just saying if we should add the traveler is encouraged to use a city vehicle, rental car, where there might be a cost benefit to the city. I understand that if they're going to Minneapolis for one day in and out, there might not be a vehicle. But if they're leaving on a Friday or Saturday morning for a conference, there might be a vehicle available. So I'm just asking if maybe a city vehicle, the word, the term city vehicle should be inserted in there for them to consider at all possible times.
Okay, any other input?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm a little bit concerned about that, and I don't know exactly how all the pickups are fitted, but I've got to believe that some of them have a base of essential tools and equipment that probably stay in them based on the department that they're serving. So sometimes taking the pickups, I'm not disagreeing with other vehicles, but the pickups are typically task assigned, and I think that it might not be advantageous to have them with the tools leaving the city for other commutes.
And Craig, I don't disagree with that either. But again, and I just use a pickup as an example, the city motor pool. I mean, there are Chevrolet Impalas that we probably wouldn't take to Tracy, but I know recently their city administrator and councilman Lozinski took one up to northern Minnesota. So I'm just saying that, and that was probably within the last couple of years, but I'm just saying if there is a city vehicle available, doesn't necessarily have to be a pickup, so.
And I don't disagree with that, Councilman LaBatt, and I think that what Ms. Dubs had explained, I believe, it does indicate that they are making that determination when they make the decision on how to travel.
Yes, oftentimes a city vehicle is utilized.
I guess the question, I mean, I see a net is on, is do we spend a lot on rental cars and nets? Or Sheila, do you guys know? I mean, I just.
I'm not aware of that cost.
I don't know if a net's on, but I did look at the costs, and I could share that with you in an email. And I also know that we have a personnel committee meeting. I think that's scheduled, and we can certainly, certainly discuss this and see how we want to do the policy. One inclination from myself is to totally get rid of these pool cars, and you have staff use their own cars for general travel. I'm not advocating to get rid of vehicles for engineering or building inspection, anything like that, because we desire to have identification as a city vehicle, and we desire to have certain standards met when it comes to vehicles. And that's for some of the, of the staff and our services, we do want to provide the vehicle. But on a general pool vehicle, general travel, training conferences, I'm inclined to look at going completely out of their opposite and just getting rid of the pool cars and paying people mileage or rental cars and be done with it. But we can bring that up to Personnel Committee and see what they want to do.
This probably is a longer discussion on this. I would just add that the use of rental cars they use to the local rental agency also has a insurance benefit because the rental cost is covering the liability. So it's no longer a city cost as part of the total cost paid. John, you have something?
I'll just make a comment, but you know, to me, the first sentence really covers it. It says the traveler should choose the method of transportation that is the lowest total cost. And to me, that applies if it's, you know, some pickups are not the greatest in mileage where it's cheaper to run a rental. We just pay a flat rate. I think it's covered in that is that the traveler is making the selection of the lowest total cost.
And there was another comment I missed.
I just have a quick comment. You know, Sharon, you, and I just bring up points of other studies, and I understand what you're saying. As you guys know, we built homes in other communities. It's interesting, St. Cloud, you bring up their building department. Their building department gets paid mileage to use their own vehicles, and their building inspectors come up in their own vehicles, which is just, you know, to throw that in their identity. They have a St. Cloud sticker on their own vehicle, and that's what they use. So if you look at this, maybe that's something we should look at is how other communities handle this. And I asked that inspector, why did St. Cloud do that? He says to say it's a city money, and that's why they did it. So I just thought I'd throw that out there when you brought up vehicles, but there are other studies that do pay just mileage to their employees who use their own vehicles.
Thank you, Jim. Steve, you had something?
Well, I was going to say, you know, a lot of companies in my experience and in my field, you're encouraged to use the rental car company because it does offer a huge cost savings. I don't know, again, how much we're using, and if the local car rental would give us a volume discount or a government discount, but that's a significant savings. And then, like you said, you don't need to worry about the wear and tear on our vehicles. You don't need to worry about, you know, you pay for the gas and that's it, and that would be reimbursable. But other than that, you don't need to pay for anything else. So something to think about, and I appreciate it. But the one thing that I worry about in the clause is that the travelers should make their own arrangements and look for the cheapest way. I'm not sure that travelers are going to do that. I would trust that they would, but knowing myself, I don't always do it. There's been many a time when I just grabbed my car and didn't look at the, at the cheapest way because it was a kind thing, or I forgot, or, you know, I'm a human. So maybe there's something that we just set a standard, but I think that's a time and a discussion for the Personnel Committee.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other input on this item? If not, we have a choice. One is to accept the language as it is, recognizing that the Personnel Committee will have some additional discussion on this or to make any alteration this evening.
I would make a motion that we accept it as is with the Personnel Committee, taking a look at this and reviewing it further.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 11. Consider the approval of the 2020-2021 League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Property Casualty and Liability Insurance. With us tonight is our insurance agent of record and advisor Sheldon Kimpling. Sharon, did you have anything you wanted to introduce? Or Carla, did you have anything you wanted to say prior to Sheldon?
I will just take the moment to introduce Sheldon. He is from Brummer Insurance, and he's going to go over our city's renewal of the insurance for the 2020-2021 year. Thanks, Sheldon.
Thank you, Carla. Sheldon?
From insurance, as Carla stated, you've got your hand out there showing the renewal for 2020. Before we start, there's a typo for the 2020 package premium total in the far left column showing this year's premiums. The premiums are all accurate, but the total for the package, I have it as 331763. The actual math, if you add that up correctly, is 352028. So I will start at the top, the property. The property values this year, the League of Minnesota Cities has an inflation guard on the policy, so the values go up here hopefully to keep up with cost of construction should we have a claim. So in 2019, the total property values were just over 214 million with the changes that were made to the policy this year and the inflation guard, the actual amount of insurance for the property that's owned by the city this year is 218,164,125. The property this year had a 6% rate increase. The insurance market in general is going from what they call a soft market to a hard market. It's getting harder and harder to place insurance coverages. Premiums are going up quite drastically. The league, as you well know, is a trust, so it's not a standard stock insurance company. It's a trust formed by the cities, so they set their rates, and if their rates are accurate, they're fine. If the rates are higher than expected, you get a dividend, and I think you've gotten a pretty healthy dividend each year for the, for the package policy. So they had the 6% rate increase, and then 4% inflation guard caused the property premium to go from 166,751 in 2019 to 179,276 in 2020. The mobile property, which is the next one down, premiums went from 12,821 to 12,895, virtually identical. The liability, the municipal liability for the city, went from 87,258 to 87,526. Again, just literally a couple hundred dollar difference. The auto premium went from 36,400 to 32,699. Now, last year, I think it was last year, it was last year, the city elected to move the deductibles on the auto insurance from the standard 25,000 per occurrence, 50,000 aggregate. For autos only, that was moved down to $1,000 for comp inclusion with a $50,000 aggregate. So you can see from 2018 to 2019, the premium took quite a jump, but the reason for that is when you lowered the deductible down by $24,000. This year, there was an additional rate change, and there were some vehicle changes. So it went down just from 36,400 to 32,699. The liquor liability had no rate change at all. The receipts were up just over half a million dollars calendar year, or actually October to October. They're up by 535,000. So you can see that premium went from 5336 to 5513, so just a couple hundred dollar increase there due to the exposure change. The bond coverage, there was really a large decrease, almost 17% premium decrease on the bond. So it went from 1,527 to 1,265. The $1 million excess that the city carries also went down. That went from 33,808 to 32,854. So when you add them up, it comes to the total that we have now changed to 352028. There's a coverage that we talked about with both Carla and Sharon. It's called cyber liability, and I know Jeff Newsick's talked about, you talked over that coverage with you last year. The League of Minnesota Cities automatically provides $250,000 should you have to spend some cost if your systems got hacked or identification, or if anyone got any type of credit issues there. The League of Minnesota Cities offers one alternative. You can increase that coverage from 250,000 that you're getting for free to 500,000. It would be an additional cost of 1,500. Sharon, did you want to touch on that?
We, we did have Brian Hart, our IT consultant, just kind of review that coverage, and even though we do have some safeguards in place, including off-site storage and so forth, to avoid paying a ransomware attack. I'm grateful that Sheldon did mention other coverages that's included with this, but Brian Hart thought it would be a good purchase. He's had some experience with travelers and heard some good feedback from them. And he also is aware of other communities where they've had to pay in excess of 250,000 for cyber attacks. So his suggestion would be to consider the additional coverage for 1,500.
Okay, so, so right now, the package as it stands is 352028. If you decide to go with the additional 250,000 of cyber coverage with another 1,500, it would bring the package total to 353528. The airport liability, we have that separate away from the city because we wanted, over the years, the city has wanted higher limits. We have a $5 million liability for the airport. That's a three-year renewal. The last three years, you can see, were 2,000. This year it renews. They moved their premium from 2,000 to 2,300. It would be consistent for the next three years, this being year one. And the last coverage is the equipment breakdown coverage, which is the fail-safe coverage, the, you know, if you had anything that, that would cause a mechanical or electrical malfunction that wasn't, wasn't caused by your normal perils, you know, fire, wind, smoke, that far. If you had some equipment breakdown coverage, we have that separate through the Hartford Steam Boiler, and that, that premium went from 57,663 to 64,675. So if you add all them coverages up without the additional 1,500 for cyber, it's 419,003. If you choose to go with the cyber, it would add the 1,500, it would be 420,503.
And Carla or Sharon, you can clarify, this is total city, including MMU, the municipal utilities?
This includes municipal utilities, entire city, and the library?
Thank you. Questions for Sheldon?
I have a question, and it's on our boiler coverage, and we experienced a mechanical breakdown this spring. That, as far as I know, at this point is not covered. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
So.
The Hartford Steam Boiler claim.
What was that?
That, that was a coverage for the equipment breakdown through Hartford Steam, correct?
It was not covered, though, or did the ice arena get covered?
It was not covered. The claim was denied.
So should we make, so what is the purpose of having that? Because with this premium this year now, that's 222,963 we spent on coverage. Then when we made a claim, they turned us down. Or should we explore maybe looking for a different company that is willing to actually cover us for what we have insurance for?
There's our other coverages. There's municipal RE would be another carrier, identical to Hartford Steam. But the denial on that claim would have been denied by mutual RE as well. They claimed that it was an overtime claim versus a sudden and accidental, and that's the reason for the denial.
Jim, can I just mention that Carla and MMU and Sheldon all had, we all had a discussion on equipment breakdown coverage, and we did express, I think, pretty bluntly to Sheldon that we were very disappointed in the denials. And the previous year, we submitted a claim, and it resulted in an increase, I believe. So we kind of felt like we got stung twice, and Sheldon has expressed that to Hartford Steam Boiler on our behalf of our disappointment. I don't know what changes that would bring about, but unfortunately for Sheldon, on the day we discussed it, he had to listen to my rant for about 30 minutes. So I just wanted you to know that as well, Jim, and I didn't get a chance to tell you that before the meeting that we did discuss this, so.
Well, and with that, I'm great, thank you for doing that. And I would definitely look at, you know, we can say the other company denied. We don't know if they would or not. Was it overtime? I don't think it was overtime. I think we were just denied coverage on something that should have been covered. So I would like to explore looking for a different company for the boiler coverage, somebody that's actually going to support us in the City of Marshall's PR premiums. And I would really strongly recommend that.
When we had the issue a couple of years ago with the compressor at the arena, did that get covered under our boiler coverage?
I believe that it did.
Yes, that was in 2017?
I gotta look back.
I think it was 17. It was like 21,000 or?
I think it was actually 18.
Okay.
I think it was 18, yeah.
But we did, yes, we did get that coverage, but I, I have to look back. I think it did, I did affect our rates in the following year, but I don't know how much. I know the rates are there, but there's a lot covered under equipment breakdown. And the Red Baron Arena is just one line item out of many for the, for the total premium.
Right, this covers lift stations and other significant exposures.
Sure. I, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Steve. I, I'm kind of in agreement with council member Lozinski. I look at these numbers, and from 2017 to 2018, sizable increase. From 2018 to 19, sizable increase. One of those years is a denial of a claim, and then you deny the claim, yet you get this huge increase. And then this year, they denied another claim and a huge increase. This is, I'd be looking for other insurance, to be honest with you, because I, and the Red Baron is new. It is not old enough. So anything over time, that just frosts.
Sheldon, can you discuss the timing of this, if the council would exclude the renewal of the, the equipment coverage? Is there time to resolicit another carrier?
I can try. It's very short, but I can try. You shouldn't say the only other one. The most logical one is mutual reinsurance that does the same thing here. I will, I will try to get another, I will try to get another one because this renews on October 1st. And this is not something that has to be done by October 1st. If, for instance, you know, mutual RE says, hey, we're going to have a substantially better premium and better coverage, but they can't get the numbers by October 1st, you can still renew this October 1st, and we can make this decision down the road. It's more convenient to have them all together, but they don't have to be. So if we say, I can't get numbers by October 1st, but I can give them by November 1st, then you have the choice of saying, do we want to cancel midterm if there's a substantial enough difference? Or you can say, let's just change it next year. That's your call. But I would, I don't want to tell you what to do, but I would probably renew this in, or I don't know how you want to do that, if you want to say to renew it unless we get another quote or, I don't know.
I would, I would say let's renew it, but definitely get another quote from other people. And I know what you're saying, Sheldon, because I do, my company, my insurance, too, we have to have the insurance, but we can renew it and cancel at the middle of October.
Correct.
And, and you know, I, so I would, I would strongly, I'd make the motion, we approve this with the caveat that we get other quotes on our boiler coverage. Cause, um, even as Sharon said, we had a twenty thousand dollar claim. Our premium still covered that claim. There's still no money out of their pocket. So that I would make that motion that we, we approved the insurance with the expectation that we will have quotes from other companies for the boiler coverage within the next two to four weeks.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, second by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Sheldon. We'll move then to agenda number twelve, uh, wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. This is an update presentation. Is Bob Van Moron, uh, with us or else I'll first call on Jason Anderson. Jason?
Yep, Bob Van Mor is here and I'll, I'll turn it over to Bob to present.
Can Kyle pull up the PowerPoint? We can just walk through that and answer any questions at the end. This is just kind of another update of, we gave this presentation a little bit earlier in the project. They, it's been several months now and we're coming along pretty well with the project. I just wanted to give you guys a little better update to where we are to date. Go ahead, next slide. Some of the equipment that has been replaced, right? This is our grit classifier. Um, this is our preliminary treatment building. This was in dire need of replacement. Uh, this is one of the first things that they did as, as far as changing out. Went very good. Uh, it's working like a dream. You know, the next slide. The trickling filter rehab here, this was a, a large project. We're basically redoing that west trickling filter, uh, uh, complete rehab. The east one, we're just, uh, we're going to try limp by with that one as is. We'll just put a new, new roof on that when, when the project is done. They are just started yesterday putting media into the trickling filter, uh, so that west one is starting to come back and get, get replaced. Next slide. This is what, this is what the media looks like inside that west trickling filter as they were removing it. Um, you can see a lot of corrosion on the concrete there. Uh, in the center, there's usually a rotating distributor arm that's replaced. Uh, it's taken out of this picture, but that will be a new distributor on top, which sprinkles the water over that media. The media is about twenty-four feet deep. And this is our first stage of biological treatment. That's where as the water trickles over this, through the twenty-four feet of media, we get a slime growth full of bacteria growing. And as the wastewater trickles through that, these bacteria are grabbing that waste out of the water and consuming it. It's a very economical C B O D removal. Uh, works very good for us. Go to the next slide. Following the trickling filters, we have an intermediate clarifier that we can catch solids as they slough off out of the trickling filters, remove them to the system and send them to the digester and, and remove them as a solid. Uh, this one was extremely corroded. Uh, this was just a pitcher about a week ago. They, they got all the old equipment out of there now. Uh, they'll be starting to replace that equipment. Hopefully next week, we'll have that, that clarifier, uh, getting rehabbed and back online. Next slide. The activated sledge system, this is our, our second stage of biological treatment. Uh, you can see those four cells there. They're about twenty feet deep and, uh, on the bottom is a whole grid of fine bubble diffusers. Uh, they're like a ceramic stone that we pump air through and then as the water, uh, the air travels up through the water, those fine bubbles can transfer the oxygen to the, to the water and give the bacteria the, the oxygen they need. Um, because of staging, we're going to have to do some bypass pumping when we take these offline. Uh, so we're scheduling that next spring after the winter, so we can do some across the ground bypass pumping on those. Next slide. That gives you an idea of the bottom of these, these grids. There's, there's four grids there, like your four, three separate grids in each tank. So we have four cells that look similar to this. And, uh, it's been fairly high maintenance. We take those down every year. We end up putting acid on those, uh, ceramic stones and we have to pressure wash them each individually off. And, and then, uh, just to try and maintain our oxygen transfer. These are nineteen ninety-three vintage. They're getting plugged to the point where we can't use them anymore. So that's the reason we're going to be replacing those. Next slide. These are the aeration blowers. These are what we're using to blow the air down through those, uh, ceramic stones. So these blowers feed the oxygen to the aeration. Um, these are nineteen ninety-three vintage too. There, we got three of these. They're two hundred horsepower. Um, we're replacing them with a hybrid, more efficient blower, which are seventy-five horsepower now. Um, you'll see that in the next slide. We have two of these in place. They're right. We're waiting for the factory startup people to come and we'll be switched over those here within a week or two, hopefully. Going to be a, a tremendous cost saving for power. Uh, that's, that's one of our biggest utility costs is driving the electricity for those blowers. So we're going to see a tremendous cost savings there. Along with the aeration basins, we're going to have a heavy, uh, automatic control of valves and D O monitoring where we can actually automatically monitor. So we have the, just the right amount of air out there. We're not wasting any air. So these blowers will be able to speed up and slow down by the demand that's coming into the treatment plant versus running wide open right now, especially just, just wasting electricity. So that will be a nice savings for us. Next slide. These are the final clarifier pumps. These, um, they're taking water from the activated sledge system and pumping up to our final clarifiers. These are still nineteen seventy-five vintage pumps. We've got great life out of them. Um, so these pumps are on site now. They will be kind of scheduled when we do the bypassing. Next spring will be the perfect time to replace these. So they will be replaced in the spring. Next. This is a, a new final clarifier. Um, we had two current final clarifiers. It was always kind of a bottleneck in the treatment plant. Uh, with this project, we added one more final clarifier. Uh, that is just about complete. We're basically waiting for a factory startup on that also. So that will be online here within a couple of months. Next slide. That shows kind of the location of that new final clarifier. The two white domes on the left were the current final clarifiers. The, the new one without the cover on yet is, is the third new one. Just to the left of that, there's a concrete structure that's new. That's a splitter box. So when we, we use the final clarifier pumps to pump that activated sledge, it goes to that structure and it'll split the flow evenly between the three final clarifiers. So we get even, nice even flow through those. And then in the back of that clarifier, there's a smaller concrete structure. That's a return and waste station. Uh, that'll, that's a new station too that we're re- replacing. Just an easier feed to distribute that sledge off of the three clarifiers versus the two. Next slide. This is our new bio solids, concrete storage tank. Um, that's two million gallons of storage. There's four separate cells in there. Um, one of the issues we always had was in order to reduce the amount of bio solids, we have to land apply. We de-water them and, and take the water off and pick them the solids up. It was always the issue with the mixing we had in our old storage tanks that we couldn't resuspend that heavy sludge. Get it mixed well so we could land apply it. With these four smaller cells, we should have a lot better control over de-watering and then resuspending our solids and get a nice uniform bio solids. Next slide. This is inside of the, that tank. Um, there's a mixing room. Uh, you can see that there's two mixers mounted in there. The piping is still scheduled to be done in September here. So I'm expecting those guys to show up anytime. There'll be, uh, a lot of piping in this room for mixing and also decanting the water off of the top of the tanks. So that's all progressing pretty well. Next slide. This is looking into one of the four cells of that concrete tank. Um, it's a different style of mixer. It's a jet mixing system. We should be able to get, uh, a lot better mixing and to just pick that sledge up off the floor and get it resuspended nice. Really looking forward to this system. Next. This is in our, our current ATAD system. This is our digestors. Um, this is two thousand and seven. We installed these pumps here. Uh, we've got two of those large pumps. They're completely wore out, actually to the point where they wear through the casings. Uh, the valves are shot. So that was part of this project. We're going to replace those with stainless steel pumps, which we should get a lot longer life out of. And, uh, there again, that's going to be kind of a, a good winter project for them. So we're, we're kind of holding on for January for that one. Next. And this is, this is a mixing building for existing two blue storage tanks. We have uh, that mixing pump at the bottom there, that is completely wore out. That will be replaced with a new pump. Then a lot, a lot of the larger valves in here are, are wore out and don't shut off. So they're going to be replaced as part of this project. In order to do this, we have to have our blue storage tanks empty. So we're waiting for land application this fall. We'll get the blue tanks empty and then they'll be able to come in and do a lot of piping and replace that pump in this building. Next. Post-aeration, this is again, just kind of like our, our activated sledge aeration system. It's about fifteen feet deep of water and there's the fine bubble ceramic diffusers on the bottom of that. Um, that will all be replaced. And because this is our, it comes after our disinfection, we have to disinfect through October. Once the disinfection system isn't required, we can take this tank down and they'll probably go after replacing that, you know, early November before it gets too cold. Next. Just a summary to date, uh, just, uh, a little bit of overview, but final completion is scheduled for August of twenty-one. Uh, we did have a fourteen, the cost of the loan, the loan was fourteen million seventy-four thousand dollars. That's a low interest, uh, PFA loan. To date, everything in the project's been going very well. There's been very few glitches. So we're, we're really happy with the progress of that. Some of the, in order to keep the treatment plant running, we have to stagger a lot of these, these projects. That's what's, that's what's the tricky part of this thing is that it's been going very good. We should be able to have a couple pretty significant shutdowns for tying in some of the new clarifiers and different things like that. We're hoping to see some of those within the next month or two also. So it's coming along good. We're, we're slowly bringing the new equipment online. Um, right now we're about seventy percent complete between stored materials and, and just the project being done. So everything's going fantastic, truthfully. Next slide. Let's answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you, Bob. Uh, and thanks for your, uh, knowledge and expertise on, um, not only this project, but the, the facility and the efficient operation of that facility. One question I would have, Bob, is, um, you know, in the past, uh, few weeks, there's been some media, um, uh, reporting on the, um, uh, COVID virus, uh, of sampling and wastewater plants. And I know our plant has participated in that. At what, what point in the process at the plant is that sample taken? And maybe how often do you take them?
We, we had been, we started this like, oh, late spring, we started collecting a sample for the University of Minnesota Duluth. They have a grant where they're studying the, uh, effects of of the COVID in wastewater treatment. Um, they're, they're doing it kind of as a, a feeler of, of where where the virus is and hopefully they can get some kind of a pattern so they can kind of tell by doing this. You know, where, where this, where it's coming from, where, where are the hot spots and different things like that. We started grabbing one sample a week of our influence as the water comes into the facility. They're interested as, as what's coming in that. There's, uh, some potential that we will kill off some of the COVID. Uh, it won't survive very long, uh, going through a treatment plant and back out to the river. So the, the impact there is, is not a health hazard very much. But they're trying to use it more of a, a mapping tool of, of where the virus is. Uh, recently we're, we're taking two samples a week now. Um, we, we did get a report back. I'm trying to think it was probably May after some of the initial sampling and it did turn out that Marshall was like in the top four or five of the, I believe there were sixteen treatment plants that were, were, uh, testing at that time, sampling. So I, I haven't heard any recent updates. I have asked for some and I just haven't got them back from them yet. So I think they're getting a little bit better organized up there and hopefully I'll have a report of what they're finding and, and share with you soon.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Other questions for Bob? If not, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move then to agenda item number thirteen, uh, the Marshall cares grant update and a request. Lauren Dykes, our Economic Development Authority Director. Lauren, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor Bob. Uh, I am here today to give an update on our Care, Care's grants. The grant application period has officially closed. It closed on September eleventh and that was our two-point-O program. Our one-point-O program, oh, closed prior to that. Um, in total, we see, we received eighty-four applications, fifty-four in our first round and twenty-nine in our second. We did roll some of our applications from the first round into the two-point-O program and that was because of some changes in requirements at that time. In our first round, we awarded three hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in grants to forty-seven different businesses and nonprofits. And with our two-point-O program now closing, we did have a total of thirty-five applications. Uh, twenty-nine of those, no, sorry, thirty-one of those, which were eligible for funds. However, with the requests we received, we had two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, fifty-six, two hundred and twenty-three thousand fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. But we only have a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars remaining of the five hundred thousand we were originally granted, um, from the CARES Act funding. With that, I'm here tonight to request additional funds in order to award all of our, all of our eligible businesses, the grant dollars that they have requested. Um, if we do not receive those funds, we would have about seven businesses that would not be eligible at that point. And we would have to go into the lottery system. Um, I know that we are getting closer on our CARES Act funding overall. However, I, I am hoping that we have about fifty thousand dollars remaining that we could use for these grants, as I know these small businesses do need that money. So with that, I'd be willing to take any questions on the program as it is and request that we receive fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you, uh, Lauren. Uh, Sharon, do you want to address the, uh, available, uh, cares grant, uh, funding? Or perhaps Carla or?
Um, at the end of August, we have incurred about two hundred and twenty thousand of city related expenses and, uh, will be forthcoming additional encumbrances as we get near the November fifteenth deadline. We are, are at the staff level, um, do feel comfortable and believe that there is room for the EDA request of additional funds.
Thank you. Question?
Uh, just a comment, uh, the, and Lauren, just to confirm it. Uh, you know, this is to cover the potential of the, uh, uh, total amount is, I think, EDA's expectation that not all the businesses will be able to qualify and provide enough um, receipts of expenditures or invoices to cover the amount they've been approved for. And we won't know that for a while. So although this is being asked for is to cover the potential of that, the likelihood of actually exceeding the five hundred thousand is, uh, you know, less. likely that that's going to happen because not everybody's going to qualify for the full amount.
That's correct. We've already seen several businesses in our first round who thought they would be able to get to the seventy-five hundred and they weren't able to do so with eligible receipts. We also are on a pretty tight deadline here. October fifteenth is our requirement to have all documentation in. Unfortunately, we, we know there are businesses that won't get everything in on time as well. However, this would give us the ability to at least give everybody the chance to apply and get their documentation in, so we would have the ability to at least award those grant funds. Whether or not we use them all, as John stated, is unlikely, but we would like to move forward with being able to let those businesses know that they're able to turn in their documentation.
Thank you. Other questions?
This is Glenn Bearcooler. You have a pie chart showing the distribution of grant recipients. Do you have any idea, is that typical as far as the percentage to recipients with other communities? I'm looking at the nonprofit and, and the lodging ones in particular.
Yeah, nonprofit is going to be higher mostly because they haven't been eligible for other programs. As all the federal and state programs came out, most nonprofits weren't eligible at that time, so we were anticipating that that would be higher. Lodging, I anticipated that to actually be a little bit higher. However, with our first round of the program, they had to have, the requirement was one to fifteen employees and several of our hotels were higher than that and we didn't receive additional applications with our two-point-oh program, even though we did move that up from one to fifty FTEs. For me, I guess the numbers, the way it all broke down, so when I look at actual percentages, thirty percent were services and that was a lot of our salons, dental, eye care, things like that. That didn't surprise me. Or did nonprofits? I think the retail and restaurants was what surprised me more. I anticipated seeing more restaurant applications. We did have several of our downtown shops apply. However, we, we were pretty fortunate that we had a lot of conversations with businesses who said they weren't impacted as drastically as they thought they would be. We have very loyal local patrons, so they weren't able to show that negative impact and that's why we didn't receive as many applications as we originally had intended.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, you have the request. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the additional fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents to the city's cares fund. Second.
Motion by John, seconded by, who's that?
Steve.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
I abstain.
And the motion does pass. Item number fourteen, the City of Marshall Lion County EDA update. This is really an information item of updating us on, you know, some of the meetings and many discussions about Economic Development Authority in the city and the county. Sharon, do you want to lead this?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide in your council information some material that the county put together. If you see on their board action item, they did propose four different concepts for the City of Marshall Lion County Collaborative, if it moves forward. They did not have a chance to discuss that in detail at the county board meeting, but they are planning on having a meeting on Thursday, October first. This was just told to me today at six-thirty, so once I get the the actual invitation or the meeting scheduled, I will ensure that the city council receives it. The last time there was a meeting, we just posted it as a special meeting, so we didn't have to have concerns about violating the open meeting law, and I think we'll do that again. I've said on a few occasions for EDA staff, which is Lauren and I, we kind of have two bosses. We have the EDA board and the city council and we, we feel pretty good about where the EDA board wants us to go. But I'm not sure the direction from city council, so again, once I get this meeting request, I will send that on to you and encourage your participation so we can get some feedback from city council. I think the EDA board likes the Marshall EDA department kind of leading it. Personally, I kind of like the statute that was included in the packet. It's very prescriptive. It's very formal. There's a nice process for cities to get in and out. There's a funding source if the county would want to pursue that route. But we'll see where the discussion leads us, so just information for council and hopefully your participation next week if possible.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions? Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number fifteen, the city hall project update and consider approval of a change order. Sharon, do you want to start this?
Sure. Thus far for the city hall project, we have been following the change order policy and we've had six previous change orders related to some code requirements and some unknowns, not large amounts, just kind of typical part of projects. But now we are coming upon a larger change order due to the fact that we demoed the hotel and that means that we do need to have a wall on the southeast side of city, city hall. The original plan, of course, was to just provide an interior wall construction. Didn't have to worry about exterior because we had the hotel adjacent to city hall, but with the demolition, it means that we need to do some additional construction. If you've driven past city hall in the last, I'd say probably last three or four weeks, you've noticed that the city hall wall, the southeast wall, doesn't exist. We're really waiting on recommendations from the city hall committee who, who since then has done discussion with individual businesses and also the downtown business association. We've had some feedback from them. And one of the factors in bringing this, of course, to the council is that the amount is worthy of your approval to move forward, not just city hall committee. So I know that included in the, in the packet were different designs and I don't know, Kyle, which one you want to bring up first. Maybe if you could just go down to the original, the original drawing. So what Kyle has here is the original view of city hall and if you can see here, this is what was originally in the contract. I will point out something as we get to a revision to this. On the far left side of this page, you will see steel panels that match the steel panels for the Marshall City Hall overages over the door. And if you could thumb down, Kyle, we can look at the backside. This is actually a view of the alley. It is masonry brick. And again, this was included in the original contract. We did get an original cost estimate from the architect and the construction, the construction company, that being Brennan, and a, an approximate cost of the, of adding the southeast wall, which let me just see if that's in here as well. Bear with me for a moment. I'm sorry, there's a lot of information here. We originally had a design for the southeast wall to be similar to the brick, to the backside where there was mostly brick, masonry, a large window that would lead towards the, to the space now vacated by the, by the hotel. And an original approximate cost of this would be about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Following some discussion at city hall committee, they wanted to look at ways to reduce this and part of the reduction, and if you could pull up where we're at with that, Kyle, on what we proposed is to, on the backside, or this is actually the southeast wall. That's okay. To actually put ephes on the back, on the two-thirds nearest to the alley and have masonry, masonry brick on the front third. And then on the backside of the city hall to be, to have that completely done with ephes to save some money and then on the front side of city hall to put ephes on the far left side of city hall. And I don't know if you could bring up the front side again. That's what we're proposing there.
There.
And, and some ephes on the left side. That has resulted in a decrease of about sixty thousand. So near the amount of five hundred thousand to complete the southeast wall. So we are looking for approval to move forward with construction of the southeast wall as you see here and some other modifications. We do not have final pricing on this. We need approval from the council on the direction and where you want to go prior to coming back with the final approval. I will add that I did include change order number seven and change order number eight. Change order number seven actually includes pricing out of the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so the, the one hundred and eleven thousand actually is, is part of the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So once that change order is approved, the southeast remaining wall is approximately around four hundred some thousand. The, the change order number seven and number eight have been completed and this is because when you're in a construction project, you have to give approval really literally on the fly to keep the construction work forthcoming and to keep it going. We are butting up against colder weather. Obviously, we're in fall season now. And just a comment from our construction company there, they really will need a decision tonight in order to get not only the final pricing, but to ensure that we don't have to do a lot of extra heating during the construction, the remaining construction season. So discussion by the council, proceed with the proposed southeast wall construction and the other changes that were presented by city hall committee and then approval of change order number seven and eight, which is really a part of this, this construction. And I'll pause, possibly the city hall committee members want to add to, to what I've discussed here.
Thank you, Sharon. And the, maybe you or maybe the city hall committee, I want to give just a brief discussion of appearance of ephes, by not, those that are not in the construction field may not be familiar with, with that material.
I think, yeah, go ahead.
I said I can help out that, if you guys have been down through downtown Marshall just recently, in front of the old Henley Building, I think it's Palmer's Tattoo, where they redid the sign, that was done in ephes. The largest building that you could look at that done in ephes would happen to be the sleep in. That's all ephes except the front part of that building. So you can picture the sleep in and, you know, the different colors on that, that is all ephes. I do want to touch, you know, follow up with Sharon on this. First of all, I'd like to thank my other two committee members because we have a lot of hours putting into this in the last three weeks. We've been meeting weekly on this since it's come up. And so we've put a lot of work and thought into this. We've even had meetings with other community members. We had a meeting at the downtown association. A good feedback from them, but on the backside, I just want to correct Sharon on one of two things. The ephes is not going all the way down. We have kept the brick ledge like that as opposed to feet up, three feet up to blow the windows there to protect for snow removal because brick is a sturdier structure than ephes. So if somebody's shoveling along there, running a snowblower or something and they hit the building, they're going to hit brick on the bottom there and not damage the ephes. Ephes is a little more apt to be damaged by a shovel. Other than that, it is a hearty project, product. I mean, like I said, the whole sleep in is done in ephes and that, that was a very expensive build out there. Going forward, Kyle, can you swing to that southeast wall? This, this wall, as you can see, was a lot of discussion back and forth. We had done a picture of it all up in ephes, curtain walls, windows. The city hall committee, this is the design that all three of us have come forward to recommend. We'd like the brick up front and the reason we did the brick up front is it ties to the front. So as you're driving down Main Street, you're going to see that first thirty feet. You're going to see that brick. It's going to look nice. It looks like, you know, they really thought this out. And then we did the brick above the windows. Mr. Lebat came up with that suggestion. I really like that. I appreciate that Councilman Lebat. They kind of tie that, all that along to the back of the building to tie it together and around our windows. Ray Henderson, Hendrickson, you know, we originally had the brick above the window and Ray says, you know, doing that, we got to put a lintel above this door to hold that brick out, so why don't we pull that brick back? And all these thought processes are trying to bring this cost down because we understand cost is a major issue here. So we pulled the brick back to this side of the door because structurally it's going to make us easier and more cost-effective to build this wall. And then we did the ephes up here because for the most part, that is a a section of the wall that you're going to see it, but you know, if you're looking in the park staring up, yes, you're going to see it. But for the most part, you're not going to see it and it brings the cost down and it ties the ephes from the back to the front too, so it ties, or excuse me, the back to the side, so it ties that part of the building down and brings that cost down. In this corner here on the back corner, that's a louver for event. That's not something as decorative. That is actually, those are louvers for the air intake into the building. So that, that kind of explains as the city council committee went over this, we'd even looked at windows up on top. They don't go anyplace. Take them out. You know, the windows downstairs, it's natural light. Kyle Box made a good point at one of the meetings. He sits in his office in SMSU. He's not even facing his window. He faces away from his window. He says, you know, it feels good just to have the sun on my back. So that's, the windows do help productivity, so we left the windows in the bottom. We don't know what they're going to look at yet. They may look at a parking lot. They may look at a plaza. That has not been decided yet, but they will let natural light into offices. You may remember above this door, there was a curtain wall of windows. That was a good discussion amongst the city council committee. That lobby is also open to the front, which also has large windows. Where he did the arrow, there's curtains. We opted to take those windows out. It also saves energy plus it saves cost, but we're still getting a natural light from the, I don't know, whatever, the front of the building facing forward, so we didn't take away natural light out of that lobby by removing those windows and bringing that cost down. You know, when we had our city hall committee meeting with some of the downtown business associations, as many, you know, John Foal was there and he's fairly conservative and I credit him for that. And he said, you know, this is a good design, guys, which I know he's just one guy, but I respect him as a downtown businessman for thirty years, you know, to say, you guys did a nice job on this and it's going to be cost-effective. And I've known John my whole life. He's a relative, so I know he's been conservative his whole life, so that was a good input. The back, we did the ephes because that faces an alley. It faces the old Ma Bell Building, actually, the old telephone building. So really, we don't have delivery trucks backing up to our building, so that was a good cost savings. Kyle, can we flip to the front of the building for a second? There's been a lot of discussion on this ephes wall here. Sharon and I chatted about that again and we had another member and I can't think of- Sharon and I chatted about that again and we had another member and I can't think of her name. They, they have a business downtown too about taking the panels to the ephesus. I don't believe there's a lot of cost savings by removing the steel panels and putting ephesus up there. Um, I, I don't, I would recommend putting the steel panels back on to that section of the wall. You know, with our visit, with our conversations back and forth, there is very little cost savings go between steel and ephesus there. Um, and that would tie that side into the, the front of the building, the Marshall City Hall. Different panels, you know, we have, um, somebody said, I think the courthouse has metal panels on it. Brammer Bank has metal panels on it. If you've been to a Vikings game, US Bank Stadium has dark metal panels on it. So it is a, a construction prod- product that is used throughout the area. And this door here, we do need this door here. It is not just a, a exit out of the um, chambers, it is a fire escape for the building next door. That was granted to them twenty-five years ago, so that has to be done that way, we need that fire escape door. For the upstairs of the building next door. Um, so that, that's a, a, a good explanation what the city council went through and all this discussion. Um, I would entertain Russ or John to add on to that please.
Before that Jim, I, I would just like to um, commend and thank the City Hall Committee because as you said. There, this committee has put a tremendous amount of thought and time and effort. Uh, into this project and, and will continue that probably and, you know, for the next nine months until this project is completed, so thank you to the City Hall Committee. I'll turn it back to the John or Russ, if you, other members of City Hall Committee, if you have anything you want to add and then we'll open up for discussion in the entire council.
I just, I guess I'd like to add a couple of things, one is uh. You know, we, uh, the ephesus discussion like uh, Jim said, there's a number of buildings that have that. Already on the front in City Hall, uh, down the Main Street. Uh, one of the bigger buildings as well is uh, the YMCA has got a fair amount of ephesus on it. That was a, you know, texture that we put on that, so. It's got a lot of versatility, it can be textured, it can be colored, it can be updated with some paint, it can be repaired if need be, so uh. It's quite commonly used. The reason on this drawing for it to be on the left side of the front of the building was just. Really have some ephesus on the front and on the uh, southeast side and our south side. And then on the backside, so that was uh, just really a coloring tied in. Uh, I'm about fifty fifty on the steel or the ephesus, I'm. Can't say I'm a real fan of the steel, so uh, you know. But uh, I'm okay with it on the front either, you know, that way too. Um, you know, like Sharon mentioned, there's a, you know, this is an expensive wall, but uh. Uh, it was a big change to go from the, you know, just a simple interior wall. To a exterior wall and the added foundations, the uh, everything else that's in there, so. Um, I think we came up with as good of. Project that we can, the nicest looking building that we can for the amount of money that we're willing to spend, so we're trying not to get. An expensive alternative, we're trying to keep track of the costs, but yet. This is a building that's going to be there for fifty, eighty years, uh, hopefully longer and uh. Going to look good.
Other input, thank you John.
Yes, I would agree with what was said with my fellow committee members, uh, just one thing and I think Jim, you might have missed it, ephesus is, is a pretty durable material. It'll last thirty years, but it's not going to last a lifetime like brick will, but it'll last a long time and John, I think you made reference that. You know, we can repaint it or we can retexture it or whatever, it can be fixed if something happens to it, but. You know, we, we looked at it as a cost saving factor and also tying in with the side of the building. To the back of the building and everything else and as far as the front, uh, I agree with John, I'm fifty fifty, I could go either way.
Thank you, other uh, input from the council?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I first of all, just want to compliment and commend my uh, council colleagues who have put all the energy and effort into this. Uh, along with city staff and, and the uh, in our contractor, construction contractor and the architects. Um, you know, I look back at this and I think at how long it's been going on. And as far as I can tell and some information that I was able to pull together with assistance from Sharon and others today. And this started back in ninety-eight. And we've been pushing through on this and, I mean, I think that everybody did yeoman's work to try to meet the needs and desires and potentials of, including the hotel project and. I think back on this and as much as this wall has been the epitome of Pandora's box. I'm actually grateful that it played out the way it did, had we gotten a developer to go in, invested in a shared investment with city dollars. Into trying to reclaim that knowing now, if we'd have known then what we know now, we wouldn't have offered it. Um, you never know what you're getting into, we were fixing basically three buildings. With what they hid under there and, and I'm glad that we were able to get the solution that we are and. You know, I've tried to do work just in my yard here and, and found the hidden sins that no one knows about and. And had to change and, and do a lot more work and spend more money, it's not to the level of this, but it's comparable based on the, on the value of the project, so I just want to commend everybody and. Actually looking at it, I like Jim's recommendations, I like the recommendation of carrying the brick from the, from the Main Street Third down that uh, Plaza Wall and I. I'm kind of fifty fifty on the steel too, but I like the addition of it, so I guess I'm fifty-five steel, forty-five ephesus, so that's just my piece of it for my two cents.
Other input from the council? If not, you have the recommendation, what's the wishes of the council?
I would recommend approval of option E. Um, if you can pull that one up Kyle, so we make sure we know what we're talking about, please. That's the bag. That would be option E for the sidewall with ephesus on the back and leave the steel panels on the front of the building.
And change order seven and eight?
Yes.
Motion by Jim, is there a second to that motion? I will second, seconded by John, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle, would you take the roll?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
No.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you again, everybody who's put all this work into this project. We'll move then to agenda item number sixteen, this is to consider the preliminary plat of the fifth edition of Car Estates Fifth, Fifth Edition. The action request is to introduce the plat and call for a public hearing. I should state for the record, I'll be abstaining from the discussion and vote on this item. Jason?
Thank you Mayor. Uh, developer brought forward preliminary plat, as you see in front of you. It's pretty straightforward, it's plating on one additional resident, residential lot onto the end of Car Estates subdivision, I believe it's Car Estates Second Edition. Uh, right on the end of Continental Street, fairly straightforward from a staff standpoint, the street is there, the utility stubs are there. Um, for one reason or another, there was not a lot platted into that spot with the first plat, so this is um. An attempt to add one more lot to the subdivision and staff doesn't see any concerns. At the planning commission meeting, there was uh, a family there from, from a, a couple from the neighborhood and they were concerned with street drainage on Continental. That short block drains to the east and does not get off of the road. So the developer has been made aware of that. And he indicated to me that the intent would be when the contractor is on site doing work. Or um, to build on this lot, that they would rectify the drainage issue by grading on the east side. Uh, Continental Street to create a drainage path for the water.
Thank you Jason, any questions for Jason?
Uh, this is Glenn Bearcooler, um, I believe the neighbors that were concerned about the water drainage also, also brought up the issue of maybe. Requiring the developer to put in writing something about taking care of the drainage problem.
I would agree, that was, that was mentioned and asked and I believe our answer as staff was that the council could choose to go in that direction if, if they'd like. We do have, I've got email correspondence with the developer that indicates that direction, but that's as far as we've gone to date.
Any other questions for Jason?
Jason, just a question as far as drainage. Uh, there is a little bit of a hill in that unplanned, unplanted area, so that's where the developer would level that out. Would the water, if, if we have a substantial amount of rain or whatever, would the water run along that dotted line in the back of those houses? Is that towards the east, is that, is that where the water probably would go?
I don't um, I don't know if it would go east and north or uh. East and south, to be honest, I'd have to look at the topography. Um, our initial reaction was that if the developer cut through that hill that you referred to. The uh, short stretch of street would drain onto land owned by the same developer and it would be um. Kind of his problem to manage at that point. There is no storm sewer that's very close by and alternative would be to drain. Uh, to the north along the rear of those lot lines like you mentioned. And um, tie into the storm sewer on Cadillac, you could do a storm sewer extension and do some grading along the back lot line. But I don't know that they grade consistently in that direction today.
And they, and Jason, the only reason I bring that up, I thought maybe if there was a field tile or something that he could tie into for draining. I don't know if that developer would, but you say there's a, there's a regular drain back on Cadillac Drive, so that answers my question too, thank you.
Yes, Councilman, there is city storm sewer on Cadillac that could be extended to the rear yard if that was an option that uh, they, they want to go with, we would work with the developer to come to a satisfactory uh, answer or conclusion here.
Hey, any other questions?
I move uh, to call for a public hearing on the plat to be held on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve, discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the roll call vote?
Mayor Burns.
Abstain.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass, agenda item number seventeen. The uh, North First Street Reconstruction Project, into the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on this improvement. Once again, Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you Mayor, um, this is the first step in the special assessment project or process. Um, the map you're looking at is a project area or a proposed construction project for two thousand twenty-one. This project's listed on our current capital improvement plan, it's the reconstruction of Hurst Street, Lion Street, Redwood Street and Marshall Street. Um, it, the project would include sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer replacement in this area. Uh, the street, the street surfacing in this neighborhood is uh, quite bad. And um, the utilities are in need of uh, some replacement as well, with the exception of Marshall Street, we've already done some work in, in Marshall. Um, this is just a resolution to authorize us to do the feasibility report, to provide the information to the council on. Um, the viability of the project and the cost and what we would propose to do. Um, this is the first step in the process and staff would um. We would next go to PIT, I think tomorrow to talk about this project. And once we start to get this ball rolling, we would propose to invite uh, all the property owners in the area to an informational meeting in the coming weeks to a month. Staff would recommend to approve this resolution.
Thank you Jason, questions for Jason?
Um, the only comment that I really question is the comment Jason. Is with some of these rebuilds here, and I know we're going to get the public involved. I think we should do that sooner than later because some of these will be fairly large assessments, I'm just looking at Brammer Bank. I mean, they're basically paying, going to pay for Rutgers Street. So I, I would like to see getting them involved with this as soon as we can, to see if we can tap down some of the discussion on the assessment amounts when they come forward. Uh, like I said again, Brammer, you got Marshall Public Housing in there. Um, so there's some big property owners along these frontages with this re- rebuild.
Yeah, I can appreciate that Councilman, uh, we are starting this process significantly sooner than we have in years past, we're typically doing this. Uh, in, into winter and even in the following year, maybe January, February, so we are ahead of the game and we're going to try to keep this moving. Uh, ahead of schedule so we can get input and uh, buy in on the project early ideally.
The other. Go ahead, I just want to ask because we have a whole street that has our park on the side of it. I haven't seen this done along a park, just out of information for me, how does that work on assessments when you have so much public property abutting? A project like this?
The city would be assessed per the assessment policy.
Yeah, Jim brings up a good point, the uh, you know, with the commercial property. Um, along this route. We probably the, also need to have discussion about our assessment policy for commercial properties and what the maximum amount is for projects. Any other input for Jason?
Yeah, I'd just like to um, tie into that Mayor, that's a very good point, um, we have had it on our whiteboard to get in front of the council again to finalize the special assessment policy, we spent. Quite a bit of time talking about it over the past couple of years and we still have not really put that to rest, so we want to get in front of the council. Again, this fall, early winter and um, really finalize that policy so we can move forward with confidence with the special assessments.
Other questions? If not, the recommendation is to order the preparation of the report. I saw that motion. Motion by John, seconded by Craig, discussion? If not Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda I have number eighteen, um, consider appointments to various boards that, uh, and commissions, um, you know, because we're um. Uh, restricted from having uh, interviews with the entire council and applicants, um. We, we accept applications and then uh, myself as, as well as the um. Uh, liaison to the various boards and commissions of discuss the applicants and we have one applicant. Um, for our police advisory board, we actually have two openings and I would. Recommend that Tim Tomasic be appointed to an unexpired term. On our police advisory board that would expire May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
I move to affirm.
No move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve, discussion? If not, uh, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll now move then to agenda I have number nineteen, uh, commission board liaison reports, uh, from mine. The only one that has met since we last met is the revolving loan fund of the Southwest Regional Development Commission, we did meet this past week, we actually meet about every week with. Um, the COVID RLF and we uh, we had two applications and uh, approved one and then uh, did not approve the other one. There's about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars that I, it remains to be uh, loaned out. Out of the one point four eight million dollars that was received and the goal is to have that loaned out by May sixth of two thousand twenty-one and I'm pretty confident that will happen. With that Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the merit board did meet last week and uh, kind of a catch up and where we're at and some reporting in and there's been some changes with Minnesota West and. Who they have working with it, so we had a gentleman down, uh, Bruce, I can't think of his last name, but I know Jasmine might be able to add it in, not. of his last name, but I know Jasmine might be able to add it in. Not that it's that important right now. But they've really decreased their presence there with personnel because of COVID, doing a lot of virtual training. They are still doing some of their specialized training, especially the CDL things. But pretty low presence in there, and they're evaluating that. And of course, Jasmine and Jim Marshall will stay on top of that as necessary. And, you know, things are still moving well. Jasmine, thank you, has has been a real trooper and been very open to taking other assignments. And I think she's becoming an expert on the lawnmower other than she's learned what it takes to get it towed out of the ditch if you hang it up on a culvert. But, you know, if you don't try, you don't learn. So I give her a lot of credit for that. But thank you, Jasmine, for that. And kind of some updates here, and Jasmine helps me with the bullets to make me look good. But the facility obviously has been used as our incident command COVID ICS operations center. And I think we can be really proud of the build out there as that got expanded because that's worked out really, really well. The room rentals have begun to increase since COVID. Of course, it changes things. The room occupancy of 50 is no longer 50. So groups that start getting up over 25 need to look at both rooms. But I know Jasmine's been working hard to work with people on that. The comprehensive advanced life support, their CALS medical training out of Minneapolis, conducted training there, and they use the entire facility in July. Extremely happy about it. They booked to return their group in November and three more times in 2021. So that's awesome. And that's the kind of training we're really looking for where it's got statewide vision and it's reoccurring. That looks, that spells really, really well for merit. Law enforcement training is coming up in October. And here's another good one. The Central Lakes College Fire and EMS program is conducting fire service courses here in October, November, and December, which is awesome. And then the National Fire Academy, which is out of Emmitsburg, Maryland, is hosting a new course at Merit in February. And this will be the first time that that class is offered in the state of Minnesota. So again, we have competition primarily with Camp Ripley, but also with other facilities in Shakopee, the St. Cloud area. And the fact that merit comes out on the page and we look good, and we look really good. And I think that that's only going to continue to grow. So I know that we're doing things with the budget and moving things around with some of the props. And I don't think you're getting, going to get any pushback from merit on that. But I, I will say that the board's excited. They're looking at tightly managing the budget, and we're also looking at being ready to roll out as COVID starts to release a little bit their grip and we can start opening up. The board is looking really actively at how to get this thing moving again and grab some niches in the marketplace. So hats off, and good things are happening at Merit. So that's all I have there. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Steve?
So thank you. My report, we did meet with the EBA, and we've spoken a lot about what we talked about with the CARES Act tonight. We also met during the first part of the meeting, Dave Schelkopf, new MMU director. We talked about continuing the conversation with the joint EBA city-county partnership, and that took a lot of talk. The CARE Act, we discussed it at Infinitum tonight. So that is all.
Thank you, Steve.
And the Cable Commissioner, Community Services Board, did not meet.
Thank you, Steve. Glenn?
Public Housing Commission met last week. They approved family unit utility allowances. They approved a new maintenance plan, and they approved the operating budget for the coming fiscal year, and they awarded the snow removal bid for this winter. That's it.
Thank you, Glenn. John?
Okay, as Councilman Meister stated, EDA has been pretty well covered tonight. MMU did have a meeting tonight at 4:30. I was able to attend part of that before coming over here. A couple of things to update. They're basically working on the budget. This is the first time with David Chalkoff as general manager, so he's getting indoctrinated into that. MMUA, or Minnesota Municipal Utility Association, met this summer, mostly virtually, I believe. And out of that meeting, out of that organization, Brad Rose received the honorary lifetime membership award, and Steve Johnson received the distinguished service award. And then they do have another award, which is the presidential award that they do for basically work for above and beyond. And they ended up presenting that to all of the utility workers in the state who continued on in the COVID, kept lights on, kept water running, kept everything else going. And so, in effect, all the utility employees in Marshall received that award. So there was three awards received by Marshall. Just one other item of interest, Missouri River Energy Services, which provides our electrical power, starting in 2023, is going to start a time of use rate system. And with the new metering system that's in place now in the city, Marshall is set for that rate when it comes in. So basically, with the time of use rate, if you're using power at the time when it's the peak and most draw, which you may have to do, but that will be the most expensive power. If you're using at off time rates, that's going to be much lower cost power. So much more on that coming through in the next couple of years. So we got till 2023 to learn more about that and find out a little bit more how to monitor that in our homes. And that's it.
Thank you, John. Russ?
The library board, or I should say the library in itself is probably one of the few libraries in the entire state of Minnesota that has remained open even with limited hours during this entire pandemic. But their branches continue to be closed, Ballaton and Conwood and the library has been contacted by both, by both city halls, wondering when they could be opened up. But one of the major issues that addressing the opening and back up is the cleaning of the, of the, of the facility in those towns. So, but at the present time, they're going to remain closed. Our library will continue to deliver and pick up in those communities and offer whatever services they can. They also continue to maintain the 30-minute time limit in the building. They have been challenged by that a couple of times, but nothing that they can't solve. But they hope to, hopefully someday, maybe get rid of that 30-minute challenge. So that's about all I have with the library. Excuse me, Police Advisory Board has not met, and CVB will meet tomorrow morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Russ. And Jim?
Joint Law Enforcement Center Committee met last week. I was unable to attend. My other two have not met. I do want to commend, we had a, I don't know what we call it, Craig, it was our equipment review committee did meet earlier this week. I want to commend the staff. They took $399,000 of equipment off the table for the 2021 budget to help us get our levy down to, so we can work it down to that 2%, 1.9%, 2% that a lot of us council members are shooting for. So I want to thank the staff and all the department heads that came forward with different items to take off of that. That'll be coming forward to the rest of the council while throughout the course of the year. So, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, let's start on your end.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
And Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I've got one thing. I noticed in the paper the other day that the city had put out a request for bid for salt for this winter and tuna, 500 tons of salt, which, as you know, goes on the street and then ends up getting washed into the river, similar to what we're doing, the dollar amount we're spending on the water treatment facility to remove the salt that gets used by the softeners. Now there, it's at a rate, annual rate of approximately 2,000 tons of salt that goes into the river from softeners. But what the city is putting on for the roads is about, then about 20% of the salt that the entire city is putting into the river. So I did have a conversation with Jason, and I would suggest that the city start looking at methods that we can use in the future to help reduce the use of salt on the streets. And at this point, I'm going to ask Jason to jump in because he responded back with kind of a list of things that the city is doing now and to just get it all straight, make sure it's correct. I'm going to have Jason cover that. So we're all aware of it, what they're, what we're already doing.
Okay, Jason?
Thank you, Council. Yeah, no, that was a point well taken from Councilman to Kramer. And, you know, I think it's something that we'll continue to keep our eye on. In the short term, I do have a class next, early next month with the MPCA. I think it involves numerous other public works departments, and it's kind of a roundtable discuss, discussion and sharing of information regarding chlorides and how it relates with snow removal in our MS4. We're also looking into getting smart salt certifications for our street department staff and some of our engineering and building staff who help with salt, salt and sanding operations and snow removal. There's a program out there, a training course where you can do the MPCA, where you can, you can get the certification that's good for five years. And it's just all about using salt smartly and wisely. So those are the short-term things that we're looking at. You know, as far as the 500 tons of salt, that's not something that we may not use at all, but that is what we are buying this year to put into our stock pile. We do mix salt and sand to try to minimize how much salt we use, and we'll continue to look at finding ways to apply less. As far as alternative products and materials, we'll keep, we'll keep talking about that as well. I think to date, there's not a lot of other good cost-effective options, but we'll keep, we'll keep our ears open and our eyes open on that topic.
Jason, as John, one other practice has been to collect the sand that would have chloride attached to it through the street sweeping operations as early in the spring as possible.
Yeah, naturally, that can help as well. As much, as much as we can pick up, the better, for sure.
Okay. And just like to thank Jason for, you know, covering all that. And because I think, yeah, we're spending a lot of money to get rid of the salt in our softening system. And now I think we also need to look at what, you know, what can we do for the rest of the areas? And this is obviously with 510s, that's, that's a lot of salt. One other last item, talking about people in the community getting awards, Kathleen Almec, who runs the transportation system for a good chunk of this side of the state, has received the Transportation Professional of the Year Award by the Transportation Alliance. So just wanted to bring that up. She handles the community transit. We're in good hands with her work, and the state has recognized that. So congratulations to her. That's it.
Okay, thank you, John. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing just to play up, Jim talked about the Law Enforcement Center Management Committee. They did meet last weekend. There's going to continue with some of the upgrades there with lighting and then looking at ceiling tile. And then there'll also be something forthcoming on some additional carpet replacement in the squad room areas. But continue to work for, move forward and look at the capital expenditures necessary. We still haven't spent the original amount. That was a lot of the $25,000 for this year. So that'll be part of what they're working with now. And then we'll be putting together some more capital requests coming forward. The only other thing I have is I there got some community concerns, and I want to thank Jason and the engineering group for, we met and talked about it. And, you know, there's some concerns down along the Pell Tier Street with drainage and, and snow removal and some other concerns there. And we know that's a problem area. It's, it's, it's one of the lowest areas in the system. And, you know, it's got, we've got the complexity of the railroad and working with culverts and crossovers there. And, and, you know, and we know that, that working with those solutions with the railroad is slow and, and takes a lot of planning and a lot of certification to get a project pushed forward. So I appreciate the, the dedication of our staff and the patience of the property owners and residents in that area to try to get resolution. And, and we'll continue to look at that and move forward. And other than that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything else. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd like to say is keep wearing your masks and take care of yourself. COVID numbers, as we know, are going up, and it's real. So just take care of yourselves. And that's all.
Thank you, Steve. And Glenn?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, for my part, let me hit on just a couple of things. Earlier this month, the 9/11 event at Memorial Park was held. And once again, it was a very nice program. The, it was a, a day that was overcast, started to rain, but we still had a really very good crowd, and we had two excellent speakers. So a very nice program. And this is the 19th anniversary, of course, of the 9/11 event. And this is the ninth anniversary of the Memorial Park in Marshall. So next year will be a, a large year. I think the, to be really thanked is our Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall, along with, with Tessa from his department, who did a lot of planning and really had a very nice event. The, we have a, as the council recalls from last year, for the annual evaluation of our city administrator, it was suggested that this year would be the right timing. And of course, lots of challenges this year, but we've had the right timing in the tenure of the city administrator to do a 360 review that involves both in, not only the council, but also internal and external evaluators. So it was a more comprehensive evaluation. So if it meets with the council's approval, I will be working with the, our HR Director Sheila Dubs on the, really following the, the protocol for a 360 evaluation. So know that because Sharon's evaluation or her annual, a date was early November, right? So that means that our evaluation process really needs to start this one. With that, that would be all that I would have this evening. So we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up one thing that Mr. Schaefer had brought up on the CALS, when he was talking about the Merit Center. The CALS stands for the Comprehensive Advanced Life Support. That is a fantastic medical training that teaches all courses of life support from neonatal all the way up to advanced trauma life support. It is comprehensive. It was actually, Craig said it was started in, or Honcho or Sendard and Headquarters out in Minneapolis. But it was actually developed right up the road in Granite Falls by Dr. Dale Carter. So this is really based, really initiated, and it really, really helps us physicians learn everything one fell swoop. And it is a great, great course. So I just wanted to shout out to the people in Granite Falls for giving us Dr. Dale Carter to give us CALS and keep it coming back to Marshall to train because it's, again, a nationwide thing.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Let's move then to agenda I have number 21, staff reports, starting with Sharon, City Administrator.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. I did put this in a update, I think via email, but we did have a small group of city staff, the mayor and council member De Kramer, and selected community members talk about diversity, inclusion, and equity. And it was a really, really good discussion. It's part of our strategic plan, which for the most part, our strategic plan has had a And it was a really, really good discussion. It's part of our strategic plan, which for the most part, our strategic plan has had a, it really hasn't gone very far this year, just due to everything that's going on with the pandemic. And we hope to meet again here shortly in the next few weeks to just kind of talk about where we want to be. I do want to also bring up one other topic, which, you know, there hasn't been maybe a lot of community discussion about it following the announcement. And it would be kind of easy not to bring it up, but I just want to give a little credit to Mary Martins at Avera. She obviously announced her resignation this past week or late last week. She, I think, showed a lot of courage in how she went about it, how she announced it. And I know that was a really hard for her to do that after being there for thirty-five years with Avera. And a lot of times people in leadership positions do not make popular decisions with employees. They really are trying to look out for the future and the greater good of the organization. And I think when we look back at Mary's tenure with Avera, we're going to be grateful for a lot of things that she did. She was a tough negotiator when it came to acquisitions, including with the city of Marshall. And I wasn't there, I know the mayor was. And just a lot of other developments with construction for Avera Marshall. And, and the name of Avera Marshall means a lot to the city. We don't want to just be another Sioux Falls hospital or you know, just another part of McKinnon. And we're obviously grateful for the leadership of Avera from Sioux Falls. But I think to have that staying power with her leadership and then also the, the facilities itself that we have here in Marshall, it's a credit to her. And you know, finally, I'll say, especially this year with coronavirus, it's put on a, a lot of difficult decisions and work. And you really have to have strong leadership in those positions. Very grateful for the council that we have and our police chief and, and for Mary Martins during this. We, we did a lot of good things to kind of help where we needed to be. So I just wanted to comment on it. May not be popular, but I want to speak the truth about how I saw the, her leadership in the short time I've known her. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
I can provide a quick construction project update for the council. South Forest Street's progressing along quite nicely. It's starting to look more and more like a finished product every day. When you start seeing the concrete go down, it starts to really come together. Between Country Club Drive and Southview Drive, the curb and gutters in place, most of the valley gutters are in place. And they're pouring driveways and continuing to do concrete work. So that's starting to take shape. The utility work between Southview and Elaine is, is getting there too. They'll continue with sanitary and water main work this week. And you know, if everything goes right, maybe we can get close to getting those two things wrapped up and, and get into storm sewer next week. So that project's coming along and coming along nicely. South First Street, we, we kind of expected Dunick to start this week on some utility work at the intersection of First and De Shepherd. They may still do that towards the end of the week, but we're, we're a little uncertain yet at this time. So we'll, we'll wait and see there. If they don't get started this week, I would really expect them to start right away next week. And the Legion Pond Project is pretty well wrapped up. You see the, the pond in the park is seeded and shaped. The one behind the homes near Buffalo Ridge is, is not quite finished, but we're, we're getting there. I think that's all I've got.
Hey, thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Or any questions for Sharon? If not, Dennis? Okay, then we'll move on to the remaining items, which are the information items, including the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Any comments on either of those items? If not, that brings us to consider adjourning. Is there any other business to come forward to the Marshall City Council this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve to adjourn. Discussion? If not, a voice vote on favor of adjourning, say aye. Opposed. Motion passes or adjourned. Thank you.